It's two parts, the bulk of it being for paycheck protection, unemployment benefits, schools, vaccines, and other items, and then another 160 parsed off to be hopefully for state and local governments, although it looks like Senate Leader McConnell remains opposed to supporting state and local governments with just general revenue backfill. So that seemed to be a sticking point. A big piece, of course, for households that we serve is an extension of unemployment assistance for 16 weeks with a $300 supplement per week. Absent this, unemployment supplement will end on December 26th. Just a reminder, I've said this data before in the meeting, over 300,000, there have been over 300,000 unemployment filings in San Francisco since the beginning of the pandemic. And for, I always do this comparison, the Great Recession in '08, '09, there were only about 45,000 filings. So obviously, from that data, the economic devastation in San Francisco is seven, six times as worse, if you use unemployment as an indicator. So that extension of unemployment benefits will be really important for our families and individuals in the city. Another big piece, of course, for us out of COVID Command and Human Services Branch is food support. There's $13 billion nationwide in the federal relief package for food assistance, part of that being temporarily increasing SNAP benefits, which of course, California's CalFresh by 15% for four months, and then additional food for food pantries, food banks, schools, childcare meal programs, WIC meals on wheels. So all of these components, except for this food support coordination strategy, would be supported with this federal package. Another piece, of course, that's important, is rental assistance and eviction moratoriums, $25 billion towards that. It's put more into the end of January of next year, 2021. And then PPP for our small businesses, which is important for us because it can help keep people hired. So hopefully, I actually heard this morning that there seems to be, again, a bipartisan agreement, and so hopefully we'll see something, maybe even today. Now, switching gears to COVID, and you know, I like in this meeting to give commissioners an overview on sort of the COVID disease status in the city, so you get a picture of kind of where we're at and how that interplays with what we're doing at the Human Services Branch and the COVID Command Center. So the key indicators that we're looking at, there are three, six, seven, eight indicators that we track, but there's a few of them in the surge that we're particularly paying attention to. And this data is as of, I believe I pulled this from yesterday's email, it gets updated daily. What we're looking at is the impact on the healthcare system of the surge, and of course, the disease situation, and those indicators are telling us how bad this surge is. The one we look at mostly is the increase in the prevalence of the disease, and it's a metric of number of new cases per 100,000 in the population over a seven-day rolling period. And the latest, we're at 27 cases per 100,000 over the last seven days. Just to give you a sense, we only need to be six cases per 100,000 to be in the red, the red tier, red category, which is high alert, so we are almost five times that. The other, and then so of course, we want to see, well, how is that impacting our hospital system, which ties into the work of COVID Command? Increase in hospitalizations over rolling period, we're up 30%. The tier cutoff to be in the red or high risk, 20%. However, we do, unlike other parts of California and even Bay Area region, we are maintaining in the green or normal status capacity in both ICU bed availability and acute care bed availability. We're at 23% over rolling seven-day, seven-day period, we're at 23% capacities, so 23% availability for acute, and 32% for ICU. Both of those are in the green, the green cutoff are 15%, 20% respectively. But those, those numbers will, as the virus continues to be persistent in the city, those numbers will go down, and that's what we're watching, and that's where we come in in terms of our system, our alternative care system, to really keep that relief valve from the hospital open. I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Just to give you a sense, some sort of context, the number of 27 per 100,000 doesn't, without context, it's kind of a number in the abstract, but if you look back over the last month, three, five months, the surge we had in the middle of summer, post the July 4 holiday, we were at about 15 per 100,000, and that was the most recent surge. And then even as recently as October, November, we were under five cases per 100,000. So that number can really just skyrocket, which is what we've seen. At the beginning of December, we were at about 17 cases per 100,000, again, now we're at 27. So that number, we're talking about flattening the curve, that's the curve right now that's going like this. So the stay-at-home orders that the mayor has instituted, and the governor has attempted to get that curve from there to there, obviously. It's too early to know whether that is actually occurring. We had a report today from our partners, UC Berkeley, and it's just too early to know. So as I said, the mayor, of course, went ahead of the state in what she's done, you know, in her public health office, right, around the world. Dr. Polfags, I've been ahead of the state, recognizing the earlier we act, the better likelihood we have of flattening the curve. Mayor went ahead of the state to shut down certain activities, as you know, including outdoor dining, indoor playgrounds, rec facilities, hair salons, barber shops, museums, bars, wine, movies, movie theaters, et cetera. Impact on HSA, there is none in terms of our operations, where essentially we provide essential services, and we continue to do so under this order. We continue to maximize telecommuting. I should say that you probably saw this, I think it was in the February, yesterday, the day before, now that the Bay Area region is at under 15% ICU capacity, with some counties at zero, including the Bay Area wide region, which is, I think, 13 counties, are all under the order that the mayor and health officer put out last week. So because we're under the state order now, it's at least three weeks to be in the same status. The impact on the Human Services Branch at COVID Command and what we're working on, again, continuing to do what we have been, but in particular focus right now on our ability to help the health system manage the surge in the virus and medical surge. So continue with our isolation and quarantine rooms and setting up of surge sites, and this would be basically congregant sites that would be available to help upload COVID-positive individuals who did not need to be hospitalized. We have a 45-bed site open now, and we are prepped for another 330 beds should we need them. We also continue to expand our isolation and quarantine hotel room capacity. Right now, I think the data I got this morning, I think it was 41 isolation and quarantine hotel rooms available, and we are trying to prop up another two sites totaling almost 100 rooms. Again, that's to help with the hospital. And then the third piece that we're doing is helping the general with discharging of vulnerable homeless individuals who do not need to be hospitalized. We don't want to discharge those individuals to the street for myriad reasons, and so we're looking at backfilling empty shelter-in-place hotel rooms for medical discharge. But sort of all that in combination helps our healthcare system manage the surge and keep capacity available for people who are medically needy and need either acute care beds, ICU beds, or just general hospitalization. And again, doing all that surge work, we continue to oversee all the shelter-in-place hotels and other congregant sites, and we're continuing to develop a system for housing planning, removing the guests out to permanent placements over the next nine months or so. Just a reminder that that's 25 sites, 25 hotels with over 2,500, over 2,500 rooms, so that's not a small operation to oversee. And then the last piece around COVID response to the city, of course, is the vaccine, which has been in the news, which obviously is great news. San Francisco was allocated an initial allotment of 12,000 doses in the first round, with more to come shortly. These are the Pfizer doses, Moderna will be coming, hopefully in a week or so. The word is about 6,000 for Moderna. A lot of the decisions regarding distribution are dependent on sort of the timeline of federal government and state, we're taking the leadership, guidance from the CDC and the State Department of Public Health, on what the priority is. The state is, decides, they do. The prioritization is set by, like I said, the state defense. First vaccines go to high-risk healthcare workers, residents and employees of long-term care facilities. As you know, COVID disproportionately affects, adversely affects older, people over age 65, older people, and those with underlying health conditions. Obviously, as we get more vaccine, we sort of tier who gets it based on sort of a vulnerability scale and an essential worker sort of definition being in the healthcare area, to try to, you know, take care of this instance, or post-sick. So I'll pause there on COVID, if there are any questions, and then move on into HSA, agency operations. Any questions on our COVID response? Commissioners?
Any questions?
You can always ask, obviously, questions at the end too on COVID. So in departmental agency operations, in our Communications Division, we held just this week what we call an HSA Benefits 101 webinar. It was on December 15th, so a couple days ago. Basically, a webinar to help community providers, community-based organizations connect people that they're serving with our services. We had over 700 representatives from community-based organizations register. So we focused on HSA benefits and services and programs, what supports are available during the pandemic, eligibility for non-citizens for our services, and then advice tips for CBOs on how to help clients apply online for those services. I started the webinar just with a few opening remarks, but Noel Simmons, who was the brainchild of the webinar, really led the presentation. A lot of follow-up, we're going to put a copy of the presentation, the webinar up on our website, we're going to send it out to all the registrants, and then we're going to do a survey to see if we met the needs, what might improve if we do this again. It really was a high level of interest, which, you know, I think is an indication that our service providers are seeing an uptick in, not surprisingly, right, in households and people that they serve. So I'm really pleased that it was so well-attended, so much interest. Internal communications, I'm hosting, along with my executive team, the final all HSA staff town hall today at 2:00. The mayor, Mayor Braid, will kick it off, and basically, it's just a way to connect, you know, it's so hard to connect with a staff. It's a way for us, the HSA leadership, to connect with all of our staff, talk about priorities for '21, and really do a year, given an update somewhere today. We had over 1,500 staff attend the last town hall, so there is a lot of interest among our 2100. In finance administration and human resources, you'll see, there's an item later in the agenda on our racial equity plan that's due per city ordinance, on 1231, basically, from our agency, and then she cares, Miley, the director of the Office of Racial Equity in the City, who are attending. You may have seen in the news Chronicle ran a short story on the budget instructions that we received yesterday. Just give you some highlights, really more lowlights, actually. The city's projecting a budget shortfall of about 600, a little over 650 million for the upcoming two budget years. In context, that's out of a general fund of about $6 billion. So you're looking at about 10%. The shortfall, not surprisingly, is the result of slower-than-expected revenue growth, costs for employee salaries and benefits are increasing, assumption of no new federal relief in terms of general federal relief for localities, and then additional costs for the city's response to COVID-19. There is a current year deficit of about 116 million that the mayor's office is going to work on balancing internally and not asking departments for additional cuts, unless departments have their own revenue shortfalls that they will have to make up on their own. We don't, fortunately, we actually have a revenue surplus at this point because of additional investments from the state. So the direction from the mayor was departments proposing a 7.5% reduction in general fund ongoing, and then a 2.5% reduction, contingency reduction, so basically, a 10% total reduction. As you know, most of our budget is funded through, two-thirds to three-quarters is funded through state and federal revenue. So the general fund piece, that 7.5 and 2.5 will come out of just the general fund portion of the state and the federal piece. We don't know what that number target is yet, the dollar target is. Generally, we'll work with the mayor's office to agree on the denominator and then take the percentage out of that. The state, fortunately, is projecting a surplus, and so, you know, hopefully, they will continue the investments that the governor and legislature made last year, and so will help sustain our services and can manage the general fund reduction without a degradation in our services to the public, because that remains to be seen, until we get our target. The mayor's focus, or where should departments focus? Top priorities for managing the COVID-19 pandemic, of course, is supporting home businesses, mental health intervention to our homeless residents, helping small businesses that suffered during the pandemic, and then addressing, continuing to address equity issues. The mayor wants departments to prioritize core services, especially those that effectively deliver equitable outcomes. And for any proposed budget reduction, we have to, we will do an equity analysis and call out any sort of equity impacts that would be a result of our reductions. And the mayor's office did note that they would like to see equity investments funded, so even prioritizing additional funding towards that if possible. Just key dates for this body to keep in mind, we'll see some new forecasts in January and February, but the commission meetings for the budget will also occur during January and February. Obviously, a lot more detail is in the now. Budgets are due to the mayor's office at the end of February, February 22nd, and the mayor, of course, proposes her budget to the board on JIM first. So a lot more, you know, obviously, there will be a lot more discussions around the budget with you all. On the facility side, we've been really hard at work protecting our facilities, or ensuring our facilities are safe for our clients and for our staff. All of our facilities that are open, which are our service centers, and they've remained open throughout the pandemic. We have safety plans that are approved by the city administrator's office. We did install, just this last week, automated temperature check kiosks at all of our service centers, 3120 Mission, 70 Otis, 1235 Mission, 1440 Harrison, and 2G. And these are actually, they're, you stand there, and it's an automatic temperature scanner, and if your temperature is fine, you can proceed. If it's not, we do extra precautions, and security will allow you to, either not enter the building or do your work remotely.
Hey, man. Hi.
Someone's not on mute, I'll talk over it.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Yeah.
Okay. In SFBN, San Francisco, or SF Benefits Net, of course, we're seeing a significant increase in applications for assistance, not surprising. In 2020, we had over 110,000 applications for our benefits, representing about 162,000 San Franciscans.
Yes.
CalFresh is up 21% since February, so we serve about 60,000 households, which is about 100,000 people, more or less. Medi-Cal serves 123,000 households, which is up 10% since February. Our cash assistance programs are not, have not increased precipitously, mostly, we think, because unemployment benefits and the unemployment bonus remains, and so households' income is too high to be eligible, but we are watching that very closely. If unemployment benefits do expire, and there's, and there's sort of runway for employment, we were likely to see increases. In fact, we're seeing a little bit in our cap program, we'll talk about in a second. In Medi-Cal, our open enrollment continues, and this is not open enrollment for Medi-Cal, Medi-Cal is 12-month enrollment period, you can enroll anytime you're eligible, but it's covered California, and so if individuals call in and they're not eligible for Medi-Cal, we refer them off to Medi-Cal. You get healthcare through the state exchange. The open enrollment period runs through January 31st, so it's generally a more, an increased workload for Medi-Cal staff as they connect households through their healthcare benefits, through the, through the exchange, through covered California. In Jobs Now, this is critically important right now for our agency to help with small and medium-sized businesses, as well as connecting unemployed households, unemployed people to jobs. We have, obviously, difficult to do that in an economic sort of shutdown right now with the shelter-in-place, but we continue, you know, essential businesses are still operating, and retail is still operating at a limited in-person basis. But we're trying to, really trying to encourage businesses to take advantage of this. We've increased reimbursement in the subsidy to employers, make it really offset those wage costs if they hire through our Jobs Now program. And we've also expanded the population to households that are earning less than 300% of the federal poverty level. So that's about a little less than 40,000 for a household of one, and a little less than 80,000 for a household of four. Again, trying to expand the pool of people eligible to be placed in jobs, as well as incentivizing businesses to hire them. I mentioned our caseload, I just want to point out, in our county aid assistance program, we have seen a significant increase in applications the first two weeks of December. We have seen in CAP, actually, a decline in applications and aid over the last number of months, which frankly is puzzling. I mean, it's a phenomenon that's occurring across the Bay Area, but now we're seeing an uptick. We've seen a 62% increase in applications in the last two weeks, and then a 55% increase in those applications that were approved, excuse me, approved. So CAP, I wish I knew the answer, but CAP is very puzzling right now in terms of its applications. You would expect to see a constant increase over COVID, we just haven't, but this increase over the last couple weeks, we'll continue, of course, to monitor that. We monitor CAP very closely because it's funded with 100% general fund. The mayor, mayor's office holds us harmless in terms of our total budget, but it is an impact on the city as the more people need applied. And then lastly, our Family and Children's Services Division, you may, those of you who watch NBC Nightly News, saw this last night, there was also a front-page article in the Chronicle on out-of-state group homes and, frankly, abhorrent conditions in group homes operated by a private nonprofit company called Sequel. Prior to these news reports, investigative reports, the state of California, through their own due diligence around looking at incident reports, made the decision to decertify all out-of-state group homes, meaning that California counties can't place foster kids out of state in these group care facilities. There's over 125 kids, I think, across California in the foster care system with that effects, and there's also kids in juvenile probation with that impacts. Basically, that means they've been decertified, that those kids need to be find, need to move back to California, and that's for them. The reason, most often, the reason these kids are placed out of state is because no state facility can take them, and they've exhausted all of those. So the challenge of placing kids back in California is immense for counties. Fortunately, in San Francisco, I bring this to your attention because of a lot of publicity around it, but fortunately, in San Francisco, we have zero foster kids placed out of state, which is really a testament to the work that our social workers do in FCS, finding placements with families and placements in California. There are two kids from juvenile probation, I believe it's two, who are placed out of state, who we will work with JPD to help find places for them. So it doesn't impact us in our operations, but it is in the news, and it is, it's sort of a big deal, it's the biggest issue right now in child welfare across the state. COVID is impacting our foster families, our resource families. We had two resource families, it's the new name for foster parents, as you know, two resource families had people in their homes test positive for COVID, and they're under quarantine, and all the health has been great, and our staff continue to work with them, with them, and with other homes impacted by COVID. The other concern is that there are currently 60 licensed foster homes, licensed resource families that have transitioned to inactive status, meaning they don't want to take kids around, because of concern over COVID. So this obviously puts pressure on us to find placements for our foster kids, we want to place them locally, as close, in San Francisco or as close to as possible. So people are still interested in becoming foster parents, and sort of the queue, which is about 30 pending applications, but the existing system is being strained by COVID. Speaking of resource family, we had our annual approval review by the state of California went really well, very minimal findings, mostly positive, just a few minor deficiencies. We scored really highly in our investigation process for complaints, in terms of the application process, we're doing well, so it was a very, it was a very positive review from the state. You know, to the great work of our RFA staff and our social workers. And then lastly, and on a positive note, one of our Family and Children's Services employees, Fay Ali, when Fay found out that there would be no holiday event, no holiday giveaway, we do this every year, a holiday giveaway for our foster kid, if you could present, and have a nice lunch for them, and it's really a neat event. She asked her friends if they could help out with gifts for the kids, and her Fay's friends helped out and donated 155 gift cards totaling $7,750 for our kids in foster care. And so I just wanted to point that out and thank Fay for doing something above and beyond, and resulting in, you know, a really nice thing for our foster kids. So I have a lengthy report, we didn't have a meeting last week, so I had to catch up on a lot of issues. I'll close with that, and of course, open to questions or comments from commissioners.
Any questions of Trent? Are there any questions of Trent? If there are none, then I'm going to move on to item five, present, presentation of the 2020 Manager of the Year Award to Doris Barone.
Barone.
Barone, sorry. The commission is pleased to announce that Doris Barone is the Manager of the Year. After eight and a half years at the San Francisco Department of Emergency Management, Doris came to the Human Service Agency in February 2019 to become HSA's Disaster Preparedness Response Manager. In normal times, Doris leads a team responsible for developing HSA's disaster response plans and training staff who will play key roles in disaster response efforts. HSA's disaster response role is to provide mass care and shelter services to residents affected by rare but devastating disasters like earthquakes, tsunamis, and fires. In addition, the team operates programs to temporarily house low-income individuals displaced by everyday disasters like building fires and hazardous conditions. This year, of course, times have been anything but normal because of COVID-19. Disaster response has become a much higher-profile element of both the city's and the agency's work on a day-in-and-day-out basis. At the start of the year, Doris represented HSA in the first discussions on how to shelter hundreds of individuals who had been infected by COVID-19. It did not have an adequate place to isolate while they were sick, as well as thousands of individuals who were homeless and especially vulnerable to the virus. In early March, when HSA formally received the assignment to stand up in an alternative housing system, Doris became a key player in planning and implementing the effort. When HSA activated its Department Operations Center, or DOC, Doris stepped up as the leader of the command staff. She assured that the DOC functioned internally and coordinated with a larger citywide response effort. More than anyone else on the team, she was the one who knew how to get things done in the the world of emergency response. She made sure that HSA DOC functioned well within the larger city effort and as importantly, that the HSA DOC received the support it needed from the larger system. In June, the city determined to shift the operations of the emergency response team to a more highly unified command structure. Doris was HSA's primary representative in figuring out how HSA would work within this structure. She was the one who developed the plan and arranged much of the staffing for the new human service, services branch within the COVID Command Center. Since July of this year, Doris has been the Director of the Human Services Branch and has overseen, overseen the team that has run the city's shelter-in-place hotels, isolation and quarantine hotels, safe sleep sites, and emergency feeding programs. It has been quite a ride. We have had three surges. We have a number of major policy changes. We have had some very significant organizational changes and we have had many shifts in key staff. From the start of this effort to the present, Doris has been a central player in keeping the Human Services Branch and its shelter and feeding programs running smoothly and in close cooperation with the city's overall COVID response. Congratulations, Doris. Trent, Mr. Rohr, would you like to add to these comments?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes, I do want to add. I'm glad to see that COVID Command is representing here and I'm very bummed that we can't do this in person. Doris, congratulations, so well deserved. It's really been a pleasure working so closely with you since March, as I think other folks on this can attest to. I want to give commissioners and others on the call just a sense of the scale on what is underneath Doris's leader of the branch in terms of the alternative housing system. 28 hotels totaling 2,678 rooms, 10 congregate sites totaling 853 slots, five safe sleep sites totaling 217 slots, one RV park with 120, excuse me, 115 RVs totaling 3,868 slots. There are currently 2,900 people either indoors or at a safe sleep site due to the leadership of Doris and the individuals who are working at COVID Command. In addition, we have almost 600 sites, 600 slots in congregate hotels pending should we need to bring them on for surge. So you're talking over 45, almost 4,500 rooms or beds. That's just massive to bring that system on, starting at the middle of March and to oversee that and work with our partners at Health Services Branch and Logistics and the whole system is incredible. And I'm not even talking about the food support that we've provided since March, which is over $40 million worth. I think everyone would agree who have been now exposed to emergency response in this COVID since March, it is chaotic, it changes, not daily, it changes what seems like hourly. There's a huge amount of unknowns and uncertainty, especially with the pandemic. The most important element of a successful leader and manager in this is calm. And Doris is the epitome of calm. I haven't seen her get rattled yet. Maybe it's off camera, maybe when she turns off her camera. But have a leader who is that solid and so steadfast in her work, her notepad, I got it, okay, yep, got this, got this. It makes my job so much easier and hopefully all the people who are working the branch agree that when you have a leader like that, it just makes everyone else's work really that much, that much easier. And the other piece, she's a really good communicator and which, which is so important when you're working across these different branches and tendency to be siloed in a, in a command structure. And I've heard nothing but good things from other branches about, about Doris and her abilities and her skills and her demeanor and communication skills and, and she works her butt off. So, you know, thank you, Doris, for your tireless work, your steadfast, calm leadership and overseeing such a massive system that have helped literally thousands of San Franciscans and protect them from getting this virus. And even bigger, helping the healthcare system in San Francisco meet the needs of those who are really sick, which is why we're doing all this. So Doris, I can't thank you enough. I wish it was in person, but you are so worthy of this award and pleased that we're able to do this today. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doris. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, if I may. So I arrived to the Human Services Agency in 2019 and I was very excited. I had worked at Department of Emergency Management for a number of years before that. And to be honest, I was a little bit daunted to learn of all of the work that HSA does, you know, across the city for so many San Franciscans. And I didn't know how I was going to lead a very small but mighty team, emergency management team within HSA to prepare, you know, the 2,300-plus staff at the agency plus all of the programs to be able to respond to all the threats and hazards we experience in San Francisco and across the Bay. But I didn't have to worry for long because suddenly, at the beginning of 2020, we were thrust ready or not into responding to a global pandemic. And we always say in emergency management, you can plan, 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 but really it's doing the work and being in the response is really what matters and where you're going to learn, where you're going to learn everything. And so I'm going to say thank you to my Disaster Preparedness and Response Team at HSA, Kira Barrera, Ben Ames, Donna Atkins, and John Murray for your continued trust and support. I came in excited and with a lot of ideas and you all have kind of followed me into the fire, for lack of a better term, into COVID response and you have been amazing. And then to my larger COVID Command Center, Human Services Branch team and family, we've been in this for almost a year. It is a really long road. When we talk about emergency management, we always say, this is the big show, this is the Super Bowl. We didn't think the Super Bowl was going to last this long, right? We thought it was going to be a much shorter amount of time. So thank you for your commitment, your creativity, and your grit. Many of the folks that I work with right now and are part of my Human Services Branch team were not trained to do this work, but they have showed up day after day with commitment and dedication to do this, to save lives and to really help as many San Franciscans and here that we can. And so thank you, everyone. It has been the honor of my career to represent the Human Services as part of COVID response and I am very excited to continue to lead this team into the future. So thank you for this award. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Doris. Excellent, excellent. Thank you, thank you. Yeah. Item six on our agenda is I'd like to have a motion to approve our consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
Second favor.
Aye.
So moved. Now moving on to item seven, Commission Business Action Items. A is racial, racial equity resolution and presentation of the city's HSA racial equity work. Asa King and Shakira Simley.
Oh, good morning, Commissioner. So great to be here today and very special congratulations to Doris on the much-deserved award. I was also at the COVID Command Center with Doris and learning from her leadership to work on this, this massive effort was something to really watch. So congratulations to Doris and, and others at the COVID Command Center. You know, as Trent mentioned, we have a, a long commitment to racial equity and want to really introduce to you some of the things that we have been working with. I am joined today by the Director of our Citywide Office of Racial Equity, Shakira Simley, who has taken the, the leading role and creating a clear vision for how we approach racial equity as a city. After Shakira speaks for a few minutes, I will be speaking a little bit about our efforts at HSA and some of the specific things that we've been working on in regards to our racial equity plan and, and how you fit in and the support that is much needed from this commission and supporting the department with this effort. Shakira has definitely taken a, a leading role in how we've been able to shape and mold our planning and our efforts in this area. And I know our employees have been very engaged and, and very apt to, to learn from her leadership. And so with that, I will turn it over to Shakira for some remarks and then I will talk about our internal efforts afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Asa. I really appreciate that warm introduction. I also want to give props to Doris for, for incredible leadership at the CCC and leading us through the terrible pandemic. When I was an Equity Officer at the COVID Command Center, was really grateful to work with her to get services and support for our most vulnerable San Franciscans. So kudos to you, Doris. And thank you so much, Honorable Commissioners, President Khan, and also I would like to thank Director Rohr and also thank you so much, Asa, for your steadfast commitment as it relates to racial equity within the Human Services Agency and through the city. As a city's largest anti-poverty organization, it's really important to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure we're uplifting equity at every level of the city, inside and out. I have several slides today to talk to you a little bit about the Office of Racial Equity, the work that we've done and some advice and some foundational information to help us understand what we're solving for. And I'm also happy to see that this resolution has come before you. We have had some very large and powerful commissions across the city who have stepped up and presented resolutions as relates to racial equity, from our Rent Board to Planning Commission to the SFPUC and also my Home Department, the San Francisco Human Rights Commission, which is led by Director Cheryl Evans-Davis. And what we see now is a movement, a growing movement for racial equity. And I'm happy to be in this role to work alongside all of you to make sure that San Francisco can be a place where folks can feel free and safe and nourished and housed, no matter what they look like or regardless of their background or race. So with that said, I want to jump into my presentation. Thank you, please bear with me for one second as I do this. In our brave new digital world. Is everyone, can everyone see? Little thumbs up?
Yes, we could see it.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving forward, again, my name is Shakira Simley. I'm the Director for the Office of Racial Equity. The Office of Racial Equity is housed within the San Francisco Human Rights Commission, which is led by, many of you know, our amazing leader, Director Cheryl Evans-Davis. She is fantastic and I'm happy to be able to walk along with her and work with her every day to make this work happen. We have faced a year that has shown us the need for racial justice at every corner of society. We have had a summer of our Black uprising and a righteous racial reckoning and we are in the middle of a pandemic, which has had tremendously racialized outcomes. And now more than ever, it's important that we solidify and reaffirm our commitment to racial justice, particularly as government. And due to the resources that we carry, due to the people who are underneath our offices of care, it's incredibly important from our commissions to our, our departments, to our city workforce, that we're working together to realize a vision. And it shouldn't take, you know, so much harm and trauma and, you know, terrible videos of unarmed African-Americans being shot in the streets for us to understand this. I think we know what we're trying to solve for and what's important. So I'm asking everyone to respect this moment and walk together as we uplift racial equity. The vision for the Office of Racial Equity is to transform systems to support the collective liberation of Black, Indigenous, and people of color in San Francisco. In order to dismantle a system of oppression and white supremacy, we work towards rejecting Native American and Native invisibility and rejecting anti-black racism to make sure that everyone has a seat at the table and can see themselves and can succeed regardless of their race, ethnicity, or background. Just a little bit of background about the office itself. It was legislated by Sandra Lee Fewer and Vallee Brown on our Board of Supervisors last summer. This work, the folks who laid the groundwork for this work actually was Director Davis, then President Cohen, and now Mayor London Breed. And also with advocacy of our Black city workers, Black and Brown city workers, community groups, neighborhood groups, and it was legislated in response to, oh, so sorry, it was legislated in response to our city's growing racial disparities, which I said again, it has been exacerbated through COVID. And the goal of the office is to address the history of structural institutional racism in San Francisco's delivery of services in its internal practices and systems and external. And as I said, we are a division of the Human Rights Commission and it's led by myself, my staff member, Sami Awada, and we're also hiring additional staff in the coming months, which is very exciting. I have the pleasure of working with folks like Asa, who are leading the charge of their individual departments, so we can build a citywide effort for racial justice today. So our, our mandate is broad and quite strong. It's important because we have, out of the 35 offices of equity across the country, San Francisco is one of the only ones that has a legislative mandate, which talks about workforce audits or city contracts audits or making sure that San Francisco has a racial equity scorecard, which is coming through next year. Today, I'm going to talk to you about a piece of our, of our mandate, which relates directly to you, which is our racial equity action plans, which impact board commissioners and also racial equity leaders and teams. But from providing recommendations to the mayor's office in regards to budget, providing a now racial equity analysis to the board supervisors when it comes to pending legislation, we do have a broad mandate, which is very exciting. We've been very busy from, you know, working, being Equity Officers at the COVID Command Center, we supported the Economic Recovery Task Force. In this past summer, we released our racial equity framework and template, which Asa and their team has been working tremendously hard on getting that done with their racial equity leaders, which has been great to see. And I'll, we've released a new website, our vision and values toolkits, and I'll be sure to place all this information in the chat for your future review. Also, worked with the Mayor's Budget Office on putting a racial equity lens under this budget process, which we'll, we'll see. And also, we've provided a lot of support in this general election to make sure that folks who are generally homebound and don't have an opportunity can have access to vote. So it's been a very busy year for us. I stepped into this role last year. In no way did I think I would be walking into a global pandemic and doing this work through that lens. It's been a hard year, but one that we've learned a lot and I'm proud of that. In, in doing this work, I want to just be very, very clear on what we're trying to solve for. So I just wanted to provide just a baseline of what we talk about when we say racism. So generally, when people think about racism, they may think about it in two ways, right? So the racism that exists within individuals or negative ideas that one may have about themselves, we call this internalized racism. Or more properly, people think about interpersonal racism, which is the racism that happens in between individuals and it's the holding of negative ideas and attitudes of, towards different races or culture. And it often follows like a victim and perpetuated model. However, when it comes to government and when it comes to the work that we are seeing being done by our city departments, including HSA, we're trying to solve for something larger. We're trying to solve for institutional racism, which is institutional cultural practices that perpetuate racial inequality and how benefits are structured to advantage powerful groups at the expense of others. And we can see that in San Francisco. We see that in our who gets, who's housed and who's not. We see that in who is reliant and needs extra access to our social services. We see that in who's hungry. And, you know, this stuff can happen absent of specific mal-intent, right? When we have institutional racism system that compounds, that creates systemic racism, right? So this is a joint operation of institutions that produce racialized outcomes, even if there's, like I said, no specific racist intent. And we can see that in our criminal justice system, like our prison industrial complex. We can see this in unequal educational outcomes. Indicators also include, you know, power inequalities and different policy outcomes due to rates. And part of the racial equity plans that have been put forth, departments are analyzing that within their workforce and within their services, right? Like, how are our Black and Brown employees faring? And why is that different? This is what we're trying to solve for in San Francisco, and that's why we want to make sure we're keeping our eyes on the prize and tackle this entrenched issue. Also, we need to make sure that we're having a lens of dismantling anti-blackness, which is a belief system that avoids Blackness of value while systematically dehumanizing Black people. It's incredibly important, given the marginalization, displacement, outmigration of Black people in SF, that we are maintaining this lens in the work that we're doing. And that's something that we hold true and are working actively on with all of our city leaders, including our mayor. When we solve for systemic racism, we can see that it's connected to so many different issues, right? So from our underfunded school system to infrastructure to budget cuts, pollution, all of these things are linked to this one issue. So if we can start by counseling root causes, we can get to the solutions that are necessary. And again, I like to say, based on all the commissioners here, and I really hope that everyone takes this to heart, you know, racial equity is everyone's job. Yes, I have the privilege of doing this work and working in this role, but racial equity is everyone's job. So when it comes to dismantling systemic racism, particularly in a system like government, which we have, you know, from the Chinese Exclusion Act, which helped create Chinatown, to redevelopment, which has negatively impacted the Western District and Fillmore. All of that historical racial harm happened within the offices of government. So we have a lot of work to do as far as racial reconciliation and healing to get this freedom. Again, under the incredible leadership of Asa, we have incredible racial equity leaders in every department. And these slides helped help you understand what they are set to do from liaison with our department directors, writing plans, instituting programs, pushing forth different strategy and completing the racial action plans, which are due on December 31st, and also sparing training, learning opportunities, and promoting a culture of inclusion and belonging and working directly with my office. To close, I wanted to lift up Section 7 of the plan, which talks about boards and commissions and gives commissioners an opportunity to understand how they can uplift racial justice and equity as well, and the different goals that can be put forth to think about whether you're passing a racial equity resolution, or you're agendizing issues related to racial equity, or you're making budgetary decisions through a racial equity lens. Like I said, racial equity is everyone's job, and everyone can see themselves in this work. And lastly, you know, we want to make sure folks are not moving through a place of guilt, but moving through a place of accountability, of awareness, and recognizing one's privilege. There are levels and depths of work when doing racial justice work, and it requires an ongoing commitment and responsibility, respect. And I really want to, this quote from LOK really always the sounds of me to ignore evil is to become an accomplice to it. And we don't want to be an accomplice to racial injustice here in San Francisco. And the work that we see through HSA moving forward would help make sure that does not happen. Like I said, I'll be able to share some resources in the chat, so you can see our work and be informed by it. And I just ask that feel free to stay in touch with me and my office as we build and grow this office and get incredible work done. So thank you so much. I'm going to pass it back to Asa, and I'll also be online for any additional questions. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. That we really appreciate, and I'm glad to have you join us here today. I do want to just speak for a few minutes before we open it up for questions about, just open it up for questions about specifically what we are doing at HSA and what our new Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging is doing. Now, start sharing my screen. So I want to talk a bit about how we find ourselves as an agency at this point, and a little bit about our history of how we got here. So you may remember previous presentations where we talked about joining the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, and it was really our way of formalizing our racial equity work. We know this has been a commitment to employees and staff for a number of years, well before then. But this was our key effort to, how do we grapple with these things in a tangible way? And how do we make change and progress? And so with that participation, we received technical assistance from the National Organization of other governmental organizations where we could learn and share information and be a part of a national network. That started an 18-month strategic planning process internally, which culminated in what we call our GARE report, that I believe was previously presented to this commission. That was the culmination of hearing from over 70 staff and focus groups, researching best practices, and doing a hiring analysis of our most populated position, the 2905 Senior Eligibility Worker Position, to really dive in and look at those, the key areas that we really needed to focus on. And from there, staff told us about some really key priorities. And one of the main things that was a recommendation in the GARE report and why we created this office was there was a need and understanding that we had to create more capacity, a formalized process to get at some of these things. And so with that, in 2020, we created the Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And with this office, it was a way to carry out the recommendations from the GARE report and also to really look at the work that needs to continue to be done on an ongoing basis. And so in the Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, some of the key things that we're working on is engaging staff, right? We know we have to listen to staff to have their input and involvement to guide what we see as key priorities. What we see is key strategies. And so we did have a racial equity work group under our work in GARE, and we reconvened a new cohort of employees, and we expanded. We had 15 participants at our inaugural Racial Equity Work Group. This year, we have 27 staff who will be participating in the work group for one year. And we hope to continue that every year to have a new cohort of racial equity leaders that we will both train, engage, and really take a leading role within the department and helping to advance racial equity. Also, we've been working on policy and procedural change. One of the things that we learned through GARE is that we needed to do this work internally first and look at our workforce to figure out what are those issues that were most pressing to employees? And how do we make the policy changes to create the real structural change that we want to see? Additionally, creating learning opportunities for employees. So I think we mentioned, probably to this commission, some of you may have known that earlier this year, we did an agency-wide Racial Equity Town Hall with staff, and we had an enormous participation of, over 300 staff attended that event. And Director Davis from the Human Rights Commission was there as a speaker, in addition to some of the leaders from GARE, to really bring home to our staff, what do we mean when we say racial equity, to provide opportunities for more learning and involvement in our work. And then the other key component of what we're doing in our DIB office is we're partnering with our key stakeholders within the city. So like our Office of Racial Equity and also with the Department of Human Resources, where we know that we have to partner to make lasting change on some of the citywide policies and efforts. And we want to really partner and speak in one voice around racial equity as a city. And so like Director Simley mentioned, you know, talked about our Racial Equity Action Plan. In the legislation that was passed by the Board of Supervisors 2019, it not only created a citywide Office of Racial Equity, but it gave a very specific mandate to city departments to work on drafting a racial equity action plan by December 31st. And so as you can imagine, we are working very diligently to put the finishing touches on our plan. We have used our Racial Equity Work Group to really get feedback and inform what we have as key priorities and key actions in that plan. We've also talked to key stakeholders throughout the city. Where can we partner? Where can we be in alignment with other departments who have a similar scope of work and similar size as us? And it's been a very collaborative process with our city partners and with our staff as well. And so Phase 1 of this plan is really looking at our workforce and how do we promote equity there? And we will have a Phase 2 of our Racial Equity Action Plan that will focus on how we deliver services and our engagement with community. But the key areas that I really want to call out, there are seven key focus areas that were set out for us to really dive deeper on. So in hiring and recruitment, it's really looking at how do we bring people within our organization? How do we have hiring policies and practices that are fair and equitable? And how do we get at having our staff and who we hire be reflective of the clients and the communities that we serve? And then that was a key thing that we learned through GARE, a key area of focus for our employees. Additionally, on retention and promotion. How do we keep people here? How do we keep our best and brightest talent within the department? And how do we keep them advancing upwards to move along their career path? We really looked at key HR functions around disciplinary actions and around organizational culture as well, because we know that these are really key things that impact what an employee's experience is like working at HSA and key areas of focus for us. Also, as was previously mentioned, Section 7 of the plan really entirely deals with the roles of boards and commissions. And that's really where your role is, when we need your leadership in this plan. And so I know many of you have already dived deep into the resolution, but I do want to call out a couple of the key things that are mentioned there and that are going to be reflected in our plan and what I hope that we can get from your commitment to this work. And one is about training and continuous learning. So we have really found that in order to speak with one voice and get everybody on the same page and understanding how to advance racial equity, we all have to have a baseline and common understanding, a foundational knowledge of what are we talking about? What are the key issues regarding race and equity that we need to know? And then it's not just a one-time thing, but we know that this is a continuous learning process for all of us to learn how to combat bias, racism, and oppression. And then two is a key thing that is mentioned in the resolution and also reflected in our action plan, using a racial equity lens, right? Who are the communities and people that we think about in your decision-making? And really understanding who it is that we serve. We primarily serve people of Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And so we really need to be thinking about disproportionate impacts in decision-making and how these communities are impacted. And not just how they're negatively impacted, but how can we uplift them as well? How can we support and work to reverse the years of oppression and historical marginalization within the communities that we serve? And we know that we, as a department, have a unique role and a unique ability to do that based on other social services that we provide that have a huge impact in the lives of San Franciscans. And then also with racial equity, I think some of these notions are lofty and are deep. And also, there is a real necessity to start here now. And so promoting inclusion and belonging in the way that you operate as a commission, supporting those who may be new to this commission, and bringing in diverse perspectives and experiences to your decision-making and how you function as a governing body as well. And so with that, we will take any questions that you may have regarding this resolution, anything contained in it, or anything concerning our racial equity work that we could, would answer for you.
I'm going to open it up to any questions that we might have. Please state your name and ask your question if you have one. Doesn't appear like anybody has any questions. You've done such a good job explaining everything.
No questions, no questions. James McCray. I just would want to, am I muted? Hello?
You're fine.
Okay. Oh, I see. This is off. No, no questions. I just want to thank Ms. King and Ms. Simley for their presentation. Very good, and I can appreciate the work that's been done since September. Very, very, very good. I just had a question in terms of the departments. There is specific work laid out for the departments that gets into the really nilly gritty of shaping the departments and the commission's response to the resolution. How have you all felt that the department leadership and the department structures are responding to the initiative?
Thank you so much, Commissioner McCray. That's an excellent question. We know that this work is difficult and hard. Departments are on a spectrum. Some departments have been engaging this work already for several years, and some departments, this is new for them this year to do this work. We, through the Office of Racial Equity, the Human Rights Commission, work steadfast at every single level in providing technical assistance across 54 departments this year to make sure that everyone had what they need to be brought onto this journey. And I'm proud to say, we look towards December 31st. Like, pretty much everyone is on board, will have a plan, they have racial equity leaders in place. They've created racial equity committees within their departments. They've actively been working with their individual board and commissions to do the work. You know, each department is special and different based on the issues that they have. You know, racial justice is not a destination, it's a journey. So over the next three to five years, Commissioners, we'll see a lot of shifts in government. We'll see a lot of shifts in government as departments continue through this work. And the Office of Racial Equity and the Human Rights Commission will continue to work every single day with every single department. From our police department to our health department, to our smallest department, like the Department of Status of Women. And of course, our Human Services Agency to get the work done in a way that's accountable, transparent. And just, so I appreciate that question. It's been quite the undertaking this year, and we have more work to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item B. Hiro Orasi.
Do we have to take action on on this resolution? Is that asked of us?
Yes.
Yes.
If so, I would move that the commission. Has received the whereas and approve the therefore in the resolution.
I so.
Second, second.
I think that to be. To adopt the resolution. And if if so, I I second it.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, Hiro Orasi.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Hiro Araseh, and I am a Community Services Program Monitor for Welfare to Work Services. With your permission, I'd like to present items B through B together. Thank you.
All right, we'll we'll vote on them separately. You're welcome to to present them together.
Thank you very much. The Department of Benefits and Family Support requests authorization to enter into new grant agreements with Abode Services. Catholic Charities and Hamilton Families. For the period of January first, two thousand and twenty one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty two. In an amount of nine million, nine hundred and seventy two thousand, nine hundred and sixty five dollars. Plus a ten percent contingency for a total amount not to exceed ten million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty two dollars. The purpose of these grants is to provide CalWorks families meeting the California Department of Social Services definition of homelessness. With housing locator, housing connector and housing stabilization and case management services. To obtain and retain permanent housing. Since the inception of the CalWorks Housing Support Program or HSP in two thousand and fourteen. Which allocated state funding for housing supports to homeless CalWorks recipients. Five hundred and sixty eight CalWorks families have been placed in permanent housing. Grantees will provide housing locator services, which include identifying units and providing unit descriptions for the housing match and placement process. Housing connector services, which include matching and placing families with available housing units. And assisting families throughout the lease application and placement process. And housing stabilization services, which include intensive case management through regular meetings with participants. To track progress toward employment and housing goals. Referrals to other local supportive services and housing support through landlord mediation as needed. In addition, Catholic Charities and Hamilton Families will provide employment services. Which offer a robust set of individualized support, including linkages to jobs now. All HSP families will have access to employment services regardless of which agency they receive housing stabilization services from. Grantees will provide housing placement services for a total of one hundred and fifty six families. And housing stabilization services for two hundred and fourteen families annually. I am available to answer any questions. We also have Louis Chequen and Vivian Wong from Abode Services. Ellen Hamali, Jose Cartagena and Normie Membrano from Catholic Charities. And Tim Evans and Felice Carey from Hamilton Families online. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from members of the commission? We're going to vote on each item separately for the total of the approximately ten million dollars. So item B is a total of three million, five hundred and seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollars. For Adobe Services, and I have a motion for approval.
I still move, Mr. President, with the request that. One of the representatives of the provider make a brief statement.
I will second the motion and await the statement.
Hi, my name is Vivian Wong. I want to thank you for for approving this. And we are really excited to embark on this project in San Francisco, serving. Our role will be serving about sixty families a year. And we provide these services in some other counties. So we're really excited to embark in San Francisco. And Louis Chequen, our exec, our CEO is also here. Louis, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, we're just very excited to be able to join you in a partnership to rehouse people at this particular particular time. When families are very vulnerable because of the pandemic and the economy. People are just worn out. And and quite frankly, anxious about what options they have for the future. So it's always exciting to partner with folks who get that and who are trying to really make lives better for families. Glad to be with you.
Thank you for your comments and thank you for being here.
President Khan, can I say a word?
Sure.
Thanks. I just wanted to call out Abode and and really thank them for stepping up and partnering with us in San Francisco. They have a great reputation and well deserved reputation for doing excellent work in other counties. And really helping with a very difficult intervention, which is housing, you know, low income families, especially in a high cost areas like the Bay Area. So thank you, partners from Abode. Really, really happy that you're entering the San Francisco program.
Thanks, Trent.
Thank you. Can I have a, did we have a motion to approve it? Is there a motion to approve this? Item B.
I've already made that motion, it's been seconded.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item C, Catholic Charities. For two million, fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety six dollars.
I'm moving with the same request that a representative speak.
My name is Jose Cartagena, Senior Program Director for Housing and Homeless Program and Catholic Charities. We are extremely happy to establish this partnership with your department to house families who are homeless in San Francisco. It's clearly that we established this partnership recently. We started partnership with CalWorks at the beginning of the COVID pandemic. And I can report to you that successfully we've been able to house in the peak of the pandemic, more than forty families in permanent housing. This pandemic also teaches us a lot of lesson in different ways of providing services in case management. And also teaches how better serve our families using the technology. We've been able to provide case management face to face, using team, using FaceTime, using different options available for that the families have. Was very gratifying when the housing connector of Catholic Charities was able to show a unit in annual through FaceTime. Where the case managers of Catholic Charities was able to say to the family, this is the apartment. This is the unit. This is the kitchen, this is the bathroom. This is the neighborhood. The case manager was driving around the neighborhood to be able to show the unit. That's something that COVID had teaches us to use. We are planning to continue using it to make our work more effective. And we are very glad that established this partnership with your department. Also, I would like to say that Catholic Charities have a long history of partnership with your department, not just with CalWorks. With other contracts and programs. We offer services in three counties, San Francisco, Maring and San Mateo. Thank you for establishing this partnership.
Thank you very much.
I also wanted to just briefly say, I'm the Vice President of Client Services at Catholic Charities. And we wanted to express our appreciation to this commission, to HSA, to CalWorks, to everyone involved in ending homelessness in San Francisco. And heartfelt gratitude to our progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion for approval?
I'd say that motion would require the second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, motion approved. Now voting on item D from Hamilton Families. Is there somebody from Hamilton Families that would like to speak?
Yes, hi, my name is Timothy Evans, and I am the Chief Programs Officer for Hamilton Families. Hamilton Families have been in partnership with HSH for over the past past decade in multiple. Projects, we we have continued to house and support families through the HSA program, program through the CalWorks. And focusing on locator services as well as connector services, as well as other now services across nineteen counties. We serve, we have been serving families, families with severe trauma and mental health and domestic violence. And ensuring that we provide them with the best strength based case management services and not managing families, but coaching families. But also also ensuring that families are a part of their core core smart goals that are that is a part of the scope of work that we do. With 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 the HSA team, with Hero. Anna, Anna Pineda, Lydia, who are all key partners in the work that we do across our nineteen counties. And continuing to expand and build on the relationship and throughout out the the pandemic. We we house through our contracts through CalWorks, more than fifty plus families. We continue to move families into stabilized housing, housing through through now our real estate department, through our technology. And showing families, family units virtually, but also meeting families where they are and showing them units throughout the nineteen county counties in California. So we are continuing to stabilize and thrive our families and move forward with the partnerships, partnership with now HSA. And their continued support and conversations that we have with them weekly to just ensure that we are maximizing their internal resources. And and also informing them of the work that we are doing as a as a collective. And so Hamilton Families is all is always thankful and thoughtful to the continue to to the continued work that HSA provides us in the coaching. So thank you on the HSA team.
Thank you very much. Okay, item D for five million, three hundred and seventy six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second in favor?
Aye.
Right, so moved. And I see there isn't, there is no public comment, so our meeting is adjourned.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCray.
Have a nice holiday, everyone. Stay home, wear a mask.
And from the Jewish home, Happy Hanukkah.
Yes. Your house during Advent and Christmas, amen.
Take care of yourself, George.
All right, yes.
Goodbye, everyone. Happy holidays.